Let's call the meeting to order at six thirty, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I believe in the United States. And the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Present.
Present. Um, all right, um, may our reports. Are that nice, safe and healthy in July. Um, I do wanna take a moment to knowledge, uh, brief moment of silence for on the tragedy that happened out of what July taxes families that were affected by it, so um, again, let's remember, remember that in our prayers. Thank you. Um, all right, we have a honor here. Definitely smarter than all the other people in the room right now. Uh, we have Jeremy Common, he is a Fulbright scholar, he's here um, tonight and this evening, um, we'd like to honor him, a couple little tidbits about his, his honor, he was a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Fulbright program English teacher assistant. It's a highly competitive international academic exchange program under the US State Department. He is, I believe, the first Antioch resident ever selected. Congratulations. In twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, he was a business, English and history lecturer at the University of Saint Clement's. Thank you. Uh, in uh, Bitola, uh, North Macedonia, formerly Yugoslavia. In twenty-five, twenty-six, he will be an international law lecturer at the University of. You gotta do it for me again. It's a delche, sounds like ice cream. In ship, North Macedonia. Uh, he's a twenty-twenty graduate of Carmel Catholic High School. He's also an Eagle Scout. And has earned forty-six college credits while he was in high school. Um, he's a twenty-twenty-four graduate of Kansas State University with a bachelor in science and physics. A secondary degree in this international and area of studies and minors in exploration, environmental geophysics and classic studies. Um, he's a James McDonald Lab researcher. A recipient of the National Science Foundation RU grant to conduct physics research. The DAB RISE Germany Scholarship Award for the German government to conduct physics research at the Beatty University of uh, Duisburg-Essen. Uh, Phi Beta Kappa, a physics teaching assistant and a case, K-State student graduate judiciary member of the year, a student center of the year, and definitely the most educated and smartest person that's sitting in this room right now, so again, um, why don't you come up here and just tell us a little bit about yourself? Um, a lot of life experience, uh, how old are you now?
Uh, twenty-three.
Okay.
What a face that was.
Uh, face. Thank you.
Um, yeah, so uh, first of all, I wanna say thank you for having me, I really appreciate it, it's wonderful to be back. I didn't really realize how much I missed Antioch until I was halfway, fully across the ocean, halfway across an additional continent and um, in the middle of a mountain village, so I really do appreciate my time here today to share my experiences, um. It was a wonderful time over there. My main priority goal was to spread US culture and awareness, and a lot of that I took from my time in Antioch. Many of my stories, anecdotes, pictures and in general across my many lectures derived from nights out watching football, um cheering on my sister while she danced, or even going to the local small town diners or movies. Um, each every time I told one of these stories, my students would always look at me with this like starry-eyed gaze, be like, is this real? Like, it, it, they're like, something from a movie, you know, it's always, I'm like, you know, you're kinda right. Like, you're so lucky, maybe one day I'll get to go there, and I'm like, one day maybe I'll get to go back to Antioch too, and you know? I'm back, and I'm very fortunate to be going back once more, uh, very fortunate to the US and thankful to the US Embassy of North Macedonia. I learned quite a lot there. Um, and amended by many lessons. I think that the greatest actually came from Antioch. Um, none of my degrees, none of my fields, nothing prepared me uh, to integrate into a community better than integrating into this community here. Halfway through college, uh, uh, high school, I moved uh, to Antioch with my family. And I learned how to integrate myself into a new home and actually make a new place, it's actually a home. And I took those skills and actually was able to apply using the kindness of neighbors and local community members to emulate that myself and try to give Macedonia the best impression of Antioch, so. Um, yeah, I'm so happy to be here, and thank you again for honoring me, it's an absolute honor.
Well, thank you, thank you for letting us know about this, and um, uh, we're welcoming back every time, there's another election in two years, so uh, we'll be looking for uh, trustees at that time too.
Thank you.
So my, thank you. All right, citizen wishing to address the board, do we have anyone signed up, Mary?
No.
No, okay. All right, um, then we'll move on to the regular business. Um, first is the approval of the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion in the seconds?
So move.
Motion trustee P. Action, second trustee Blue Thirtz. Uh, any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Basic.
Yes.
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 Or because?
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Item number two, discussion regarding the planning and zoning board recommendation regarding your request for a special use and site plan review for Brock's Backyard, which is located at four fifty-three Main Street, Unit A, Antioch, Illinois six zero 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 two, and uh, we have Director Campari here to uh, present the site, thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. So, right in front of us, we have a case number twenty-five dash zero-two, which is a special use for a restaurant and a site plan review for four fifty-three Main Street, Unit A, here in Antioch. It is for uh, an establishment called Brock's Backyard. Right? And the applicant is Pour and Play Entertainment LLC. This is for a barbecue restaurant, sports bar, entertainment establishment, which is called Brock's Backyard. Uh, this property is going through a special use, it went through planning and zoning. Uh, planning and zoning review, the special use feature to it, which is uh, eating and drinking establishment, more specifically for a restaurant. Uh, so it's for the barbecue restaurant. And then, this application also went through a site plan review. The site plan review was for the internal and external areas of business. The internal area is four thousand eight hundred square feet within an existing building that also shares the same building with consumed cannabis. And the proposed outdoor eating and drinking patio area will be one thousand two hundred square feet. As part of the site plan review, several items were discussed. The first one dealt with parking. So, this application, which is a restaurant for special use, does not generate enough park, does not require parking barriers, this is what I wanna get to. The business may attract more vehicles or business on certain nights at certain hours. And the property owner who's here this meeting, uh, Troy Sunday, uh, has agreed to provide us with a shared parking document that was signed by him and which was presented at planning and zoning board, which allows for patrons to the business to park anywhere within that property and the property adjacent to it. Bikini, uh, shop, and stuff like that. The second thing was the lighting. Planning and zoning wanted to revisit the lighting plan, the photometrics, which was done, especially for the new business. All the lighting is attached to the building. Uh, no new lighting being proposed. And then the third one, which was an interesting one, is the elevations for the outdoor area. The planning and zoning board felt it was necessary to see the elevations for the outdoor seating area because of protection for uh, the people that are eating there from vehicles circulating around property. There'll be uh, multiple bollards there, and it's gonna be enclosed by a wooden, wood infested area. So. So, to be precise, the twenty-four bollard will be, will be added to this outdoor area. The shared parking will be shared between four fifty-three Main Street, units A and B, and four seventy-one Main Street. Then the existing floodlights is sufficient to cover to the property lighting for the restaurant. So, this was an application that was heard back on May seventh. It was a table because additional information needed to be reviewed. It was tabled on June, June the fourth. And it was re-reviewed on July second. So, yeah. The PZB, the planning zoning board, reviewed the special use uh, content of the application, they were in favor of it, they also reviewed the site plan component. So, the planning and zoning board voted six-zero in favor of the special use and site plan, July second, twenty twenty-five. So, as my village report to the, to the trustees, will show you, you know, the uh, graphical information that's presented. What I like to point out is the outdoor area, which is on page nine of my staff report. Whatever page is under very large PDF file, shows the bollards, shows the outdoor seating area. And then, on page eleven of my staff report, shows the shared parking agreement that's submitted as part of uh, the concern raised by the chairman through parking, for additional parking if the property can't serve it. Other areas of the property could be used for parking.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the director or the applicants here tonight? Start over here, anything? Trustee Pierce? I'll come back. But. Or maybe you need a. But.
Um, honestly, I'm gonna vote yes for this thing coming to the board, because it's an exciting and good idea. I do have one concern, um, when I go by there, it's gonna be the second or third of July. Um, there was a smash burger, uh, food truck out in front, and it looked like there was several people sitting out front relaxing, you know, just as a, uh, the cannabis dispensary enjoying themselves. And it turned into something built out though, um, lounge, and I don't want that to happen, I want to make sure it stays with the concept that presented to us. And that we have something we have forcing, that people wanna have their smoking and gaming themselves.
Good. Any other questions, comments on that? All right, so we will move this, um, you're moving this to the twenty-third for approval, Howard?
Yes.
All right, so we'll put this on the agenda for the twenty-third, uh, for the vote. All right? Thank you, um, you're probably not going very far, are you? Okay. This is, I'm not gonna read all these pin numbers, um, but item number three is discussion regarding the planning and zoning board recommendation regarding your request for a voluntary annexation of not less than fourteen properties along North Grand Avenue in unincorporated Antioch, uh, generally address four zero eight-two-four North Grand Avenue through four zero five-six-eight North Grand Avenue. Um, pins all beginning in zero one two four two oh four, ending in zero zero two through zero two six. Um, we're gonna have uh, Director Campari here to present this item.
Yeah, uh, nice to see everyone tonight. So, this is for case number twenty-five dash zero-four, this is for a voluntary annexation, this is for fourteen properties originally that presented themselves, property owners, to uh, voluntarily uh, try the annexation process with the village. So, uh, the addresses are here, I'll just read them quickly for the record. Forty-eight-two-four Grand, North Grand Avenue. Four zero eight-one-zero, North Grand Avenue. Four zero seven-nine-two, North Grand Avenue. Four zero seven-six-four, North Grand Avenue. Four zero seven-four-six, North Grand Avenue. Four zero seven-three-eight, North Grand Avenue. Four zero seven-two-four, North Grand Avenue. Four zero six-nine-four, North Grand Avenue. Four zero six-eight-two, North Grand Avenue. Four zero six-four-eight, North Grand Avenue. Four zero six-four-zero, North Grand Avenue. Four zero six-two-eight, North Grand Avenue. Four zero five-eight-eight, North Grand Avenue. And four zero five-six-eight, North Grand Avenue. As I read it, you've noticed that the property addresses went from a higher number to a lower number, it's just the way the property is uh, is shown or is, is uh, naturally on North Grand Avenue, so. It goes from higher property addresses down to lower as you go southward, North Grand Avenue. So, the background of this. So, the village is interested in expanding its geographic area when it comes to improving connection within the chain of lakes, building better connections with the Lake County Forest Preserve, and incorporating more open space. So, this is a voluntary annexation. The geographic area in question, or in question for this is Bluff Lake, south of Lake Marie Forest Preserve. This area is naturally unincorporated in Antioch. It is zone R one or split zone, that's what the uh, Lake County mapping system has. So, they're in their own regular zoning district. So, as part of the Comprehensive Plan twenty nineteen, the village would like to build better connections with the Lake County Forest Preserve and also to improve connections with the chain of lake. Uh, these are two quotes from the Comprehensive Plan. Due to this notion, the village would continue, would like to continue to have the role of uh, annexing these fourteen properties, who like to voluntarily merge with the village of Antioch. At that night, three extra homeowners have decided to join the annexation process, beginning with a grand total of seventeen properties, but what's listed here is fourteen, because that's the original. So, the village would like to improve its connection with the chain of lake, like I mentioned before, and also trying to build a middleman with the Lake County Forest Preserve in a direct way. So, by accessing open space, the village is trying to accomplish its goal from chapter six of the Comprehensive Plan, which deals with open space and recreational activities. So, as part of the village initiative, and I'm gonna read this, I'll verbatim this quote from the Comprehensive Plan, is to incorporate a long-term open space plan, bike trail plan, and a regional open, open space plan that incorporates Lake County Forest Preserves. The long-term goal is to create an interconnected network of open space ranging from neighborhood parks, a trail system, a network of Lake County Forest Preserve, and creating a rebuild of open space around the village. As envisioned by the uh, village of Antioch and lead the lead region in this way, is a comprehensive open space plan that embraces the natural beauty of the region. So, that's one of the paragraphs that was quoted from the Comprehensive Plan, so naturally, this annexation is, is dealing with trying to acquire open space along a waterfront area. So, how will this happen? So, the annexation will happen between two connected lakes, specifically Lake Marie to the north and Bluff Lake to the south. Proposed annexation link will occur the following manner. From multiple single family properties that above Lake Marie, Antioch Village, it contains frontage along Inverness Drive. From Lake Marie in the north to Lake Bluff in the south via waterway connection, and then connecting to multiple single family properties that above Bluff Lake in unincorporated Antioch containing frontage along North Grand Avenue. So, the general plan is to continue to access, annex more properties along North Grand Avenue, and eventually try to annex Lake Marie Forest Preserve. So, in my staff report, page three, they show the fourteen properties that have submitted as part of the voluntary annexation. So, what the village is trying to gain in this is valuable open front, waterfront, uh, properties along North Grand Avenue that abuts Bluff Lake. So, again, the PZB, the planning zoning board, July second, voted six-zero in favor of this proposed annexation. So, in my staff report, I, I presented the GIS map of Lake County that shows the properties that are shown as the pins. Those are the properties that are considered to be, considered to want to be annexed to the village. You'll see it's, they're kind of interspersed with other property owners that are not interested, but the key, the key take from this is the annexation is gonna go through the water, not through contiguous land. So, from Lake Marie to Lake Bluff to the properties on North Grand Avenue, south of uh, Lake Marie Forest Preserve. Page five, I show with the little arrows how that idea works. The properties to the north that's shown in a lighter color, to the properties that are shaded, which is outside of Antioch, and it's gone through the two lakes. And that's pretty much it for the voluntary annexation.
Mr. Sheriff, I, I. First, um, the public policy under this request is the orderly expansion of the corporate limits of the village of Antioch, as our director saw. Annexations such as this one are beneficial to the village for key, several key reasons. They contribute to a more cohesive community by bringing unincorporated areas into the village's jurisdiction, allowing for consistent application of zoning building codes and public safety standards. This expansion also broadens the village's tax base, um, which could be to a limited extent, which can lead to increased revenues to support and enhance essential services for all residents, including public works, police. Um, and in certain instances, fire protection, but in our village, it would not be because they'd be covered by the same fire protection district and the same library district. While planning annexations enable villagers to implement comprehensive long-term planning, as again, so are fully stated by our director. Implement comprehensive long-term planning for industry development, for community growth, and ensuring services and resources are efficiently allocated across a broader area. This particular annexation is being pursued under a legal interpretation that allows for of the determination of continuity through water, reflecting a recent and novel legal developments in annexation law. We have been working closely with those people who wish to join us in the village of Antioch. At this time, we're still waiting for some additional information, um, for us to proceed. And once the information is reviewed, it's likely that multiple public hearings will be required, which they will be, to ensure full transparency and public input on this important issue. For the record, there was an objection filed to this. I do not believe the attacker had standing to file an, an annexation, to file an objection to an annexation petition, uh, which he was not a part um, that is being reviewed as well. So, I will ask for two public hearings, uh, one on the twenty-fourth and one on, I think, August the fifteenth, twenty-third.
Yeah.
Twenty-third, I'm sorry, twenty-third, yeah. Fifteen days from today's date. And thank you, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Um, all right, so I'm gonna open up for questions to the attorney or the uh, director, if there are questions regarding this matter. Trustee basic?
I got just two. Throw up both three. So. First question is, are we, are we gonna be required to snowball down there? Uh, are we gonna be required to, since there's some people, some people not uh, extend their police department to Beach Grove Road? Uh. Is that property that we're gonna annex it from the Forest Preserve to Antioch, would that be allowed future development where the plan was at one point, one acre lots, and all of a sudden, now we got homes jammed in there that aren't current to Aaron Harbor, this, the third one is to, at any point, we already got extremely the highest taxes in the, in the, in the in the town of Antioch in Aaron Harbor, because of them and school district, how does that affect property taxes? And is our property taxes gonna go up if development was allowed there? So, if, if, because then you talk about expansion of schools, because it seemed like when that was talked about, Emin School District, there's no interest loan to expand the school, or an interest-only loan to expand the school, then it came due and refinanced, and everybody's property taxes went up, Emin School District. So, you know, when this is thrown over there, they're gonna sit there and wet their lips and say, oh, we can do another tax expansion. Would we need to upgrade it because we got possible sixty-nine acres that could be developed? Unless we're gonna lock it down and it can't be developed, open space only. And then, if it's gonna be locked down, hope it, I got more, three questions. It's gonna be, uh, locked down, who's gonna be in charge of development, because fifteen years, everybody was promised a boat launch down there by Lake County, uh, trails down there by Lake County. Nothing has happened with Lake County, they, it's been a bunch, they use the word that's in the lies. The favorite word.
So, the first question would be, yes, we would be providing additional services to those fourteen properties. The second part is a good point, I also mentioned it, the sentence according to recommendation, I'll read it here verbatim. At this moment, there's no proposed rezoning of the subject property, but this will take place in a future map amendment, and the PZBA will review it accordingly. Because like you stated, uh, it automatically goes down to the state district, which is the largest that we have, so this would have to be zoned to probably an R two.
Right.
Which kind of mimics nine thousand square foot lots.
But my question is twenty-four homes, that is behalf of the village, that we don't have the money to develop trails and boat launch that was promised by Lake County.
So, the idea is, in administration, we can also speak about it. The general idea was to get the, the Forest Preserve as part of the annexation, we're still working with that, because the Forest Preserve will have that opening towards the northwest corner, towards Lake Marie, where they're gonna build a boat launch. That would provide public access to water body for residents for Antioch. So, we're still trying to get that Forest Preserve property. In the interim, we're going for these fourteen, the idea is to get all of the properties on North Grand Avenue, and to eventually, you know, go over to the Forest Preserve and say, look, we're encircling here.
How, how we're just, um, for information only, um, our, our, Lake County Board members, Kevin Hunter and Lita Peterson, have said to me recently that this project is the next one, or one of the next ones, you know, obviously, until there's work being done, it's a promise, but I haven't told that that is on there, finally coming. But trustee basic is right, that's been a, a project for ten, twenty years in a time.
Yeah, we've been listening to model and service.
But, but the idea is those to get the Forest Preserve.
But we don't wanna pay for, why should, why should the residents of Antioch pay for on a promise when it was bought, that they should fix it up, that we can annex it?
Well, the idea is to get the Forest, the Forest Preserve under the jurisdiction.
Yeah. Trustee, if I understand your question correct, you're concerned that by annexing the Forest Preserve, we would incur the cost of development?
We'd take that.
No, so, the Forest Preserve is the owner, the owner of the property, so just like all the other Forest Preserves, they're still responsible for the funding and development of it. Uh, there's no indications from our county board members that they would get any required funding assistance from the village, that would be funded through the Forest Preserve and their uh, referendum that gave them additional funds to buy land acquisition and Forest Preserve development, so that would not fall under that, so the village only tax care directly.
That's important, I have been in a government agreement, and then the other question would be snowballing police?
Yes. And, and trustee, that's a, that's a very good point as well. Uh, I can speak directly from the police department side of things, the addition of fourteen to seventeen residents, uh, is not gonna add any real additional demand on the police department services. Uh, certainly Dennis on the public works side of things would have to look at how to restructure his current routes, uh, you know, as you annex, it certainly creates the, the pathways for future additional annexations that would be expanded further beyond what we're looking at currently. Certainly, there could be, come with that additional police resource advance, and I would have to evaluate, as well as additional needs for public works, equipment, and part of maintenance.
Roadways, and, and unfortunately, people have cameras these days, and I can tell you how many times we get patrols down with young bulls road. So, that's what I'm worried about, stretching the police department, because that's maybe twice a day. So, that's what I'm concerned about, even as mean as it is right now, expanding it even more.
Understood.
Thank you. Questions, trustee Blue Thirtz?
Just one clarification, on your one that's on page four, here, the blue line, is that the area that would be annexed in, or is it just the fourteen pin number properties that are being?
The fourteen pin number. The properties that have little numbers, you know, wants to be annexed. The reason why everything is shown is because when I did the two hundred fifty-foot water notification, which I sent to certified mailings, I had to show all the properties, their boundaries within two hundred fifty feet away from it, so you see, it goes into the lake area, it goes into property across the street. The property's to the north and south and in between. And that's why the. The property sort of north and south and in between. But that's why they're all highlighted, because they're highlighted, if this was my map that I used.
Uh, that's only a question. Thank you, trustee McNeil.
Um, just a question about the initiative you mentioned about providing public water access. I know. Some of here in Herbert, I believe, has public sewer, but have we done any studies yet? I think Director Heinro was talking about like if. Other Channel Lakes residents were to connect, do we have any of that data yet of how difficult that would be or expensive or what that would entail?
So these properties all set.
Right, this is what I'm saying. I thought, I thought in the initiative that I might have misread it, that one of the goals would be to provide a public access, so I interpreted that to mean. Okay, but not public water and sewer. Okay.
Over a two mile stretch.
Okay.
We anticipate that the white utilities will remain as it is. During preliminary discussions with the petitioners. We said that they do wanna come here, I mean, you wanna part of the village, which we obviously all want. Um, but for them to maintain their current lifestyle or home lifestyle. I, that is already gonna be negotiated to keep it as status quo as possible.
Just, um, maybe this is more illegal, but, uh, I understand we're waiving all fees.
That has been discussed. We have not charged any fees as of yet. Um, I am going to bring that up during one of the public hearings.
Uh, you, with that in mind, the only thing that I have, uh, for apprehension about it. I understand that this is part of our, uh, comprehensive plan, but, uh, how easy is it to opt out?
Uh, the, excellent question. Uh, I am dealing with three disconnection cases. Um, you can, within twelve months, there's a relaxed. De-annexation or disconnection period. It is a statutory procedure you would file to be removed. Um, and obviously that would be something that would be discussed, um, that will be discussed and has been discussed. At these issues, if anyone who has filed, I was very forthright. And in conversational staff, anyone who has filed and at some point in time says, I don't wanna go forward with the process. I said we would voluntarily withdraw their petition. Do not make an open plot on these things. They wanna not come in, then we would respect their wishes.
Uh, and also, again, if we're gonna talk about waiting fees, I'd also like to see us have a, you know, a three-year commitment.
And for those that aren't. If it's okay with the chair and obviously if like the, for the governor, I'll put that as one of the topic items discussed during the public hearing. Is that fair?
Sure.
I would say five years.
It's gonna be seven by the time I get it. It's like an auction here.
The trustees does have a point. We're, we're paying for this. We should have. Consistency.
Um, my, my, uh, question right now, uh. But taking back untrusted basics is, uh, the timeframe for us to be able to provide a police response there because they have to go down. Fifty-nine and out Beach Grove Road and back up Brandon Avenue, uh, three seats, if we can impact on police response time. Is there, or. I don't think our longer response time could be competitive to show up, but.
Yeah, it's certainly, um, you know, with the way we have our, our patrol bees broken up. You know, the west, western side car would be responsible for backup maybe coming from a little bit further away depending on call assignments and where they're currently at the village. I guess I would kinda compare it to, uh. Our current arrangement now, you know, if we had a emergency call out, uh, within the eastern park or park or some of those eastern neighborhoods. Response time's gonna be a little longer typically than if you're downtown area, but to your point, yes, I think, um. Just realistically from a geographical standpoint, um, they're very likely to see an improved emergency response time as compared to what they would be offering out in the county.
Uh, then my only other question is, you mentioned the one objector which I. Whether it may be more, but one of them was Mr. Herman with his sixty-nine acres.
Yes.
That sixty-nine acres, trustee Mason, was talking about the trophy. Uh. He would have, if we're not, he's not even in the annexation plan.
So if you read section seven dash one dash three of the Illinois annexed office, if you see, uh, read section seven dash one dash three of the Illinois. Municipal code, which is the article under annexations, the objections is. Deals with those people who are subject to annexation at this time. Exactly what you said. So we're gonna research that because that's what we do. But I don't see, no more than I could file an objection from DuPage County. Could someone else file an objection under that statute as standard to so object?
Because in his letter, he, he expresses this concern about how we can then force if we, his annexation goes through, we can force him to. Develop his property, his house system.
Oh, a lot of people's, sure. A lot of people's right, a lot of, a lot of different things. And tonight we're talking about the annexation of those people who want to join us in the village of Antioch.
And today is currently farmland.
Correct.
And he also owns the property north of the fourteen.
Trustee Peterson.
I just have a question for Jeff. Um. If they were to call of, I, now, the fire district is completely separate than we are, I understand that, but they called for an ambulance or. A fire truck for some reason, um, would we send a police car?
Really depends on the nature of the call. Um, generally speaking, if we have available squad car, then yes, uh, we would accompany the fire department to most calls within the village. Again, depending on the severity, you know, if it's somebody that, you know, has a broken finger, typically they don't need a police officer there, but if it's. Quite threatening or see heart attacks, broken, um, shock, that type of thing, then yes, we always do dispatch a squad car. Oftentimes you're able to arrive before EMS, so you get another benefit for these folks to annex.
That's exactly right. Thank you so much. That's all I have here, honor.
So I know we're gonna have at least two more hearings on this, correct? So if, um, no other questions at this time, then we'll move this on to the hearings of the twenty-third and the thirteenth. For the final hearings, that's. Alright, no objection to that. Um, any other business? Thank you, I like your shirt.
Thank you.
Welcome to the, welcome to the team. Uh. Um, other business, it's, uh, alright, entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, the committee of the whole meeting. Um, at seven ten.
Some.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Martinez. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're adjourned to seven ten. It'll take a five-minute recess. Alright, let's call the meeting to order. It is. Seven twenty-six. This is the, uh, regular meeting. Uh, roll call please. Eric. Eric.
Eric.
Eric.
President. Present.
Present. Um, alright, nothing on the mayor report, no citizens. Uh, so first item is the consent agenda, which is just the. Approval of the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five village board meeting minutes as presented to have a motion and a second.
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, uh, roll call please.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
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 Pierce.
Uh.
Peterson.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff and the amount of nine hundred fifty-nine thousand. Two hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents to have a motion and a second. So move. Motion trustee Bluthard.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, any discussion, questions? Alright, roll call please.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Yes. Martinez.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Peterson.
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of ordinance implementing a non-home rule municipal retailers. Occupation tax and non-home rule municipal service tax, occupation tax for the village of Antioch. Ordinance number twenty-five dash seven dash twenty-three, to have a motion and a second, waiving the second reading.
So move, waving the second.
Motion trustee Peterson, waving the second reading.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. Um, alright, discussion. Now, this is a board. A regular meeting, but I'm gonna allow, uh, at least discussion for us to go around, uh, two times on this if there's, uh, questions or. Uh, clarifications needed. So, um, you know, in no particular order. Um, I could start on this side, I could start that side, whoever wants to go first, if you have questions or discussion, um.
I have no questions.
Anything down here, questions? Questions? Trustee Pierce.
I just wanna reiterate my, uh, opposition to this. I don't think it's the appropriate time to be imposing upon our, our taxpayers. Uh, we say now that they're open there, the state legislator, it doesn't place to. So, I, I.
Alright, alright, if there's no other discussion, I'd ask the madam clerk to call the vote.
May I say?
Yes.
Luther.
No.
McNeil. Yes. Martinez.
Yes.
Pierce.
No.
Peterson.
Yes.
Four voting yes, motion carries. Okay, item number four is consideration and approval of an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery. Retailers occupation tax and municipal grocery service occupation tax. For the village of Antioch, ordinance number twenty-five dash oh seven dash twenty-four, to have a motion and a second, waiving the second.
We'll move, waiving, waiving the second reading.
Motion trustee Bluthard, waving the second reading.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, um, any discussion on this? Trustee Pierce.
Uh, on the grocery detail pack, uh, I checked that one off of the two taxes that were imposed tonight. If this one was approved, this is more impressive and has most impact on our overall, on people that live in the residence and, um. So I accept this one off.
Trustee Bluthard?
Yeah, I just wanted to just voice my support for this, as this is not a new tax. It is a replacement of the existing grocery tax that the state took away. Um, so I, uh, have no objection to this.
Any other thing else?
Now, we're already paying the tax. It's just a governor decided run for reelection to take it off his plate and put it on everybody else's plate. Other communities have adopted it. So it's not a increase in money spent.
Thank you. Alright, roll call please.
May I say?
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Yes. Martinez.
Yes.
Pierce.
No.
Peterson.
Yes.
Alright, five voting yes, motion carries. Uh, next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing. Uh, the execution of agreement with the CZM for accounting services of the village of Antioch, resolution number twenty-five dash forty-nine, go have a motion in the seconds.
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, um, any need for discussion on this item? Alright, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Yes, six. I was so excited that we were moving fast and I was like, I'm really moving fast, alright. Woo!
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Six, uh, consideration and approval of ordinance authorizing the village administration straighter to sell, sell it. Otherwise dispose of equipment ordinance number twenty-five dash seven dash twenty-five, to have a motion, a second, waiving the second reading.
So, waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson, waving the second reading.
Okay.
Second trustee McNeil, um, no discussion, the. Uh, trustee Mason.
When we get rid of computers, are they, how are they waived? So if someone's information's on there.
Yes.
That we're protecting privacy.
That being an IT person myself, I can't speak specifically to the process. I know that the Antioch side does take. Appropriate measures. I can follow up with her when she's back from vacation, circle back with you, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's, it's a big issue. Alright, thank you. Alright, roll call please.
May I say?
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Last item is consideration and approval of the resolution. Authorizing the necessary expense for mayor elected officials and staff to attend the twenty twenty-five IML municipal league conference. Resolution twenty-five dash fifty, to have a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Motion trustee Bluthard, second trustee Peterson, any discussion? Roll call please.
May I say?
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Peterson.
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is administrator's report.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, on the subject of village hall, as I previously mentioned. We're on track to take possession about July eighteenth, and still is, uh, remained unchanged. Uh, we need our contract team again on Friday to get the latest updates, but things are going very well on that project and. Continue to move on time. Uh, following, following that, that there will be some punchless items that will continue to have to be taken place between the time we take possession and the time that we move in. There's always gonna be a couple of things that our architects and our design team pick out that need to be corrected along the way. Uh, right now, our tentative move-in date is gonna be August fourteenth and fifteenth. It assumes all of our furniture that's on order arrives on time. It is, uh, installed will be by the twenty-eighth. We plan at both village halls for two days to allow staff to train on new technology, to open their offices, to kinda get themselves set up for, for, for business. Uh, so during that time, essential services only will be open. Right now, our first opening day is currently scheduled for August eighteenth for public business. Uh, new public works facility, that project continues to develop, Dennis spends a lot of time with the architects, the design team, kind of continuing to hone that in. Uh, bid opening is currently scheduled for twice seventeen. And of course, once those bids are open, reviewed, vetted by. Our architects and our construction management team, uh, will come for, for the board in August, the President of the Nation's put that award. I just wanna take a moment to recognize all of our staff, the hard work that they put in on for the fourth of July. I think overall, um, with all the challenges that we faced, of being, uh, new staff working to find their ways and. How you watch these events without the hitch, uh, weather obstacles, delays, delays, and great. And I completely envy you that we've never, never programmed for something this large and figure out how that was all gonna work. I think, uh, I think we did a fantastic job, uh, overall as a staff. While it didn't go perfectly, I'm incredibly proud of all the staff that contributed to the event. I just like to echo, um, the mayor's earlier message that. Everything, I think, was fantastic for the community. As with all our large events, we do get together after the fact, so we do have to set up a schedule, uh, post, post-event. Debrief, uh, where all the, our present involved staff will get together and talk about what went well, where our challenges were, how we can do better next year. So I think, uh. When this, that turns next year, it's just a double, double as well as this year. Why not the board know that, uh, in addition to the current flock cameras that we have scattered throughout the village, uh, the Clubland HOA. Has submitted a right-of-way permit application to allow their, uh, HOA to install two new flock cameras within the village's right-of-way. Uh, that will kind of flag their two primary entrances into the community. Uh, these will be installed at the HOA's cost. Uh, the mon- monitoring service will be covered by the HOA, uh, much like the Red Wing View cameras, uh, were done a number of years ago. Uh, we do plan to be granted access to that data. So again, just a way of expanding the shield, uh. Of LPR, starting to be able to alert us to crime, real-time, uh, banner. Yet relatively prosecuted taxpayers themselves. So we look forward to seeing that project move forward. Jerry Williams, Park Pavilion, uh, the contractor, uh, that was hired by the Lions Club has finished all of the construction work. Uh, the illness there still is passing up, that's gonna remain in place for the next couple of weeks, as the electrical work is expected to begin on this weekend. Uh, I previously shared with the board that we were evaluating our, our options for electrical work after the boss, the employee internally that usually handles those matters for us. Happy to say that, um, Jenny Bowling Junior, uh, from Antioch Electric, who's been in our community for. His entire life is, or hearing of, hearing of the need stepped up and this company is gonna be donating. All of their labor and a significant portion of the materials for the project to the Lions Club. So I'd just like to thank them for the growing list of contributors to seeing this public private partnership. Come forward. Little bit of an update on the marketplace project. We do continue to routinely engage with the developers on how to bring this project forward. Um, we had a meeting with them about two weeks ago in regards to some challenges that they're experiencing. With IDOT making some last-minute revision requests to their submission for one seventy-three. Uh, we do have a meeting scheduled. To work through some of those issues, or hopefully work through some of those issues with IDOT in the coming weeks. You know, I have an update for the board, once we have some additional information. Uh, as a reminder, the Antioch Chamber, Commerce is hosting the Ball That Heals on July seventeenth to the twentieth. They let us know that the opening ceremonies will take place next Thursday at ten AM at Osmond Sports Complex. Uh, we're kinda finalizing the details of that, uh, that meet experience and, um, memorial being escorted in our community. Uh, just so you're aware, it's gonna be departed, eligible to Lake County escorted by the Lake County Sheriff's Police and CLC Police around noon. Um. On the day of, I suppose, the, the specific day was at twelve, it was committed, something here. On the twelfth, forgot to write that part of it down. It's gonna be accompanied by about a hundred motorcycle riders who are all veterans as well. Pumping the memorial to town, um, it's gonna move, uh, into Antioch on Route eighty-three. Uh, our PD's gonna pick it up at eighty-three Grasslake Road and escort it to its, uh, final destination, Osmond Sports Complex. We're expecting it to come to town between twelve-thirty and one, depending on traffic conditions. It's gonna be moving at a relatively slow speed. In order to allow those that wish to come out and watch tonight in town and be able to pay their respects. Route will be Main Street, uh, to North Avenue, to Teak Lake Road, to Tipo, into Osmond Park. So as the mayor mentioned, IML is, uh, coming up, uh, the eighteenth to the twentieth. We've heard from most of the board members on that also. We do plan to attend, we haven't let Rachel know, please, uh, make sure you shoot her email so that hotel reservations. As just any questions that will leave my report for the evening.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Um, Louis Clerk? Uh, trustee reports. May over here, trustee Bluthard?
Alright, go ahead. We got an email on the usage of water, six point one million gallons. Now you got a whole bunch of questions. I don't want to be accused of being a liar. I was concerned about it when it came out. And the aquifer that was draining down by five, six inches of rain this season so far. We're sucking more stuff in from outside that never probably was in the aquifer, other dirt from taking water, water pressure's been down at my house. So, his first question would be, when do we say it's time to turn it off? Because we're gonna drain, I don't have a report on the aquifer, but we've got houses that have wells at whatever depth, a hundred feet depth. That if we start draining our aquifer, then surrounding people around are gonna have to re-drill, re-drill their wells. Second, uh, has there been an increase in contaminants? Sec- thirdly, by using six point one million gallons, if we had to hook up the Lake Michigan water, does this prevent us from hooking up the Lake Michigan water that we're using such a large quantity of water and we're just dumping it down the drain? For a couple of community people that are there every hour. Plus, if the water's forty, forty to fifty degrees coming out of there, it's not even fun for kids to run around. So, those are my questions. We got Lake Michigan, we've got extra contaminants coming in, being pulled in from out. Is there strain on the aquifers? Do we have an engineering report on that? Those are my questions.
Um, so relative to the water usage, so the, the six point one million gallon figure was at the top end of the range. Um, the possible flow rates, if we had continued the pump hours per day, running it non-stop like we had to where the back ballad was out, was, uh, malfunctioning for a couple of weeks, yes, we could have achieved that rate. Um, I don't know if it's a a, a, a better number, but based on the back ballad activation, Dennis's estimates are just a little bit over forty gallons, uh, flowing through that, uh, each year, a year. It's about a, about a two million gallon difference plus or minus. Uh, as for Lake Michigan water, I think that would certainly be something that we would have to explore. Dennis and I had a, a very limited chat on that. Through taking water from, from the Lake Michigan allocation, I think limitations of what they may, how they may do that may be a little bit more strict and some after they evaluate. Dennis, as, as he always does, monitors the water system for functionality. Hasn't noticed any market impacts to the water systems a whole current, currently. Out of the, out of the nearly four hundred and fifty million gallons water we pump a year, uh, formerly enough, the gallons additional certainly adds additionally for, for pumpage coming from the system, but he hasn't noticed any direct impacts to the system. No expert on the contaminants, but, but we do test the water routinely and that we haven't noticed any fluctuations, uh, deviations from our normal readings as a result of this. Again, you know, I think, I think Dennis has been rather very frank-handed and we're only one sees into this. And we don't know what the longer-term impacts may be, uh, the greater concern with ABUCD. You know, as, as the village continues to expand and more connections are made to the existing water system, you know, commercial, residential, or otherwise, as we continue to grow, that in- increases the demand on the water system. So at some point, this additional capacity could, um, create some challenges, but nothing that we don't think that we can work around at this point.
I think the older, the over-usage of the pumps and the, the little wells, that would be interesting to know how, how much more they're pumped there, how much more we're spending electricity. But, and more and more and more, it just seems like a mighty concern about it. I don't wanna be a liar. My concerns.
I think, I think there were a question or two on this topic.
I, I just have a question for trustee Mason. Are you suggesting we shut down the splash pad or is it?
Well, when do you, when, when is it where people, you know, you, your, your concern, the concern I have is you got people in Center Street. Uh, we're down five, six inches of rain reported today in our area. So we're, we're short of rain. Well, I'm just.
Shut down the splash pad.
I, I'm not making a suggestion, I just wanna, I, I'd like to develop some type of policy.
And I don't disagree, we should have some for policy on the hours of the operation.
Yeah, I just want a policy because six point one million gallons seems like a lot of water and what's the extra cost? You're, you, since you asked the question, never want to increase water bills, that's your forte. And if we got pumps being overused and they burn out, that's a hundred thousand pump. We, we're, we're going right now through our lead pipe, which is a big cost. I just don't wanna, I just don't want hidden costs on a splash pad because we don't have a policy of when do we, we have sprinklers. People couldn't sprinkle their lawns, but we don't have, but this is a free-for-all.
Your, your solution sounds like you want to shut down.
I, you can put any words in my mouth that you want, I don't just ask for a policy.
I know Dennis is, is on this, we're looking at, you know, what, how this, this evolving, uh, use of this splash bed is going to look in, uh, the rest of this year and into next year too, or how it's gonna be configured, I guess.
I mean, and, and this was what I was gonna bring up as well, is it's I don't think adoption and sh- shutting it down, but I do think we need to look at setting more stringent hours. Until we can get that system working the way it was designed with, when it's only on when someone hits it. I think we need to, to look at reducing the amount of hours that it's running constantly because I know we want every kid that comes, every, even one, two, or three kid, we want them to be able to play in that, but I just think it's, it's running non-stop and I think we need, and, and until we get that figured out, I would like to see us look at possibly reducing hours, maybe instead of nine o'clock, maybe we get down to seven o'clock. Just something that would save some, uh, some water usage, but also give them a set time when this is available for the kids to use. But you know, I, 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 I love it, I s- I love watching the kids use it when they're there, they all seem to be having fun. Um, you know, I was there this weekend and, and even with the signage that we had showing that it was running non-stop and that the thing wasn't working, every parent, every kid was still running up to that switch and banging it thirty times thinking it was gonna speed it up. Um, so I don't think that switch is gonna be the option, but I think we do need to look at the long-term effects of it and, and what we can do to limit the use. Uh, and I don't have a problem telling the residents that it's only on from this time to this time or something like that because this is a free service to them, it is something that we're providing to them, but nothing says that we're gonna guarantee it for twelve hours a day that it's gonna be running non-stop. So I would like to see us as a board address the timing of it for the rest of this season until we get the switching mechanism figured out. Um, and, and I would be open to, to that discussion at the board level to see what we all feel about that. That's my only point on that.
I could just offer one clarification. So we did resume Ballard activated, um, controls on beginning of this week. Uh, we can, as install, we still installed a new switch, uh, we're told from the manufacturer that it's a new and improved, more heavy-duty switch, uh, that they believe will offer a little bit more durability. Again, whether or not it's gonna stand up to the, the beating that it takes, only time will tell, but currently we are working off of the, the former Ballard.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Activated switching, um, which is where the rough estimate comes based on current consumption about four million gallons per year. Certainly if it's the wish of the board, that the staff evaluate kind of peak hours that it's being used, uh, and limit the hours of operation to that, that's certainly something that we can do, just knowing that it was a when we first opened it with the new management board, wanted it to be available at all times, but if we start to kind of revisit it based on new data and water consumption, we could certainly charge Director Katlowsky with collecting some data and then revisiting what those hours of operations should be.
Yeah, I mean, I, my, my opinion of it kind of changes if the switch is working. I wasn't aware that we had put something in and it was working again, but, um, I mean, I'd be open to that discussion as you just stated. I think it is wise to look at it and it doesn't hurt, even if we don't change it, it doesn't hurt to look at what the usage is and when, when people are there and it does. Couple hours does say it was flooded with water, so.
Uh, your trustee reports on this side? Trustee?
You know, always funny to you.
Trustee, where are you at?
Uh, so I had the, uh, good fortune of walking home on, um, July fourth after, uh, the parade and I stopped by with a lot of the businesses and they, uh, were mentioning that they enjoyed their, uh, day with, uh, the mayor at uh, Latte Cafe at Anna's place and they're hoping to see if we could make, uh, point on having, uh, more of that. Uh, where we can have a little more of the meet and greet and they, we went so, uh, mayor, I bet that you'd have extended invitation for the trustee chair to say.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Trustee Pierce?
Yeah, um, I have, uh, for the, for the board, I got absolutely nailed, I think, for the pair. And they'll prepare me and I think on Mr. Dutchow, one of them concerns Oxford Knowles and the other one concerns, uh, um, they're inspired me about, which was talking at the last meeting and, uh, I'm doing some property taxes or, or impact on property taxes. So, um, I'll pass these out. Um, just sort of they have a copy and they know what I'm talking about. Uh, the first time Oprah Knowles, I had contacted Dennis, the administrator, about the lagoon of Oprah Knowles. It used to have a, um, um, you know, it was the water fountain, water circulators in there to keep the, the water moving in there so that the roof didn't go up. Um, Oprah Knowles, um, removed that years ago and the residents, um, that had popped into their house, moved, they didn't want to pay to do it this day anymore. Um, so I'd asked Dennis, uh, if it was possible for the village to install a water circulation device in there, hooking up to our electrical point. Probably be at where the, the lift station is, the, the, the house, whatever it is. And the mayor had, uh, indicated to me that they were, they were concerned about precedent and wanted input from the entire board. So, um, that's the first thing I wanted to discuss, um, was I think it's only right that we have had, had such an impact on that village over the years. The development we've allowed on the other side of it, the, the allowing, uh, the gentleman on the other side to now turn it to a detention pond for, for happy states that now flows into it or a lake or whatever he's built over there. Um, if you go either, the thing's just a, a health and safety hazard in, in, in maybe. And, um, you know, out of, out of fairness, I, I think we kind of pay with Oprah Knowles to kind of help them out with this health and safety issue. Put the water circulation in there before we had to all rise it. And as far as the precedence issue, we do stuff like the Lake, Lake Antioch, I believe, I remember in the budgetary process, we're, we're paying for share of their, their weed control money, we may be going for another subdivision. Um, I may be wrong, but I think there's, there's a share on weed control going to Antioch. Whether, whether it used to be, um, we help, we pay for parks and other subdivisions. I mean, we just bought the, the Peterson property for a, a, a nice piece of change to work towards, get something for Heron Harbor over there. We, we do things for other subdivisions, very little of stuff for Oprah Knowles. I think at minimum, we did help, help the safety issue. Um, I, I will see a huge impact on the village if there, if they just put the water down in there. So I, I'd like the board's input on that. If you want to address that first?
Sure.
Even if you can't address it.
Absolutely. So I just worked through a couple of, um, points that were made in your email by common trustee. Um, in regards to the potential for electric service, that yes, um, there is electrical connection with the lift station in that area. I did talk a little further with Dennis that that, um, could be a potential option, but it would have to be evaluated to determine whether or not there's capacity in the box to make sure we're not creating, uh, electrical strain, uh, on the lift station itself. Uh, mentioned contributions towards other HOA, um, water quality issues. So Dennis, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, but we do contribute, um, a fifty percent share of approximately twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars per year for treatment of Lake Tranquility, uh, which is the natural body of water that is kind of between the edge water, portion of Heron Harbor and then Peterson Park. Um, my understanding through conversation with Dennis is the former administrator entered into that agreement with the HOA at the time on the basis that one of the primary, um, areas of recreation in the village park and Peterson Park is fishing. That directly contributes to an improved environment for fishing. And again, that the body of water itself, approximately ninety percent of it is surrounded by, um, Peterson Park, which is village-owned property. Um, I did ask him if we contribute to other, um, weed control within ponds. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I believe he said there was two others within the village, but those are wholly contained and owned within village parcels. They're not controlled by HOAs. So Lake Tranquility, the only one we, we contribute towards, but again, the logic behind it was that majority of the, of the shoreline is owned by the village. Uh, talked to Dennis about whether or not he, you know, kind of is our in-house expert believes, um, what the effectiveness of putting a pump in that pond would be. Uh, even he was uncertain to what level of effectiveness that would be, so that would probably be something that to have evaluated through, um, an aquatics management company to determine size, like capacity, aeration, all those different types of things that go into it, or whether or not it would be a viable option for, um, the problems that they're experiencing with the lagoon itself. Then, um, you know, just so the board would enter into things with eyes wide open, you know, be the, the cost of the pump itself, the installation, but then on weight maintenance, uh, winterization, de-winterization, all those types of things that HOAs usually have for their, for their detention time blocks. Um, if you ever see, uh, Deer Crest, for example, you'll often time see that they have an aquatics management company out there a couple of times a year to out, service those pumps to make sure they're running clean, that those are all those kind of things. So there's additional costs that the, the village would be exposed to beyond just the installation of the pump, just the board enters if they make a decision that makes, eyes wide open. Thank you.
That's, that's one thing that we could be discussed by the board. Um, if we was putting on the agenda, I guess, for the next.
Yeah, the agenda or, um, uh, continue with the capital type, uh, agenda or, uh, the regular agenda?
Um, I don't know.
Alright, we'll, we'll, we'll hear your plan.
Okay. Like, try and call agents to, to, for people to know, it's only partially paid for, it's not by the association. Only the group of homes that put into it and then the rest is paid by the other side, building property. So it's not the whole association paying, or like, if we have to access.
Trustee Pierce, who do you, um, because there's been some homeowners asking about this as well with the association. Um, is it okay if we put that conjunction with the SSA discussion that they're asking about?
I think, I think that's separate.
Okay.
I know they don't, it's the same discuss.
We'll put it on, uh, put it on to the, uh, next Wednesday staff meetings if Dennis' staff could, you know, talk about timing of the agenda.
Trustee Pierce, is it the, the system you're referring to, would that be more beneficial after they dredge it out? If they do dredge out the lagoon or is it something they think would help r- right away to help clear it out?
I'm not an aquatics expert. I remember when it was here and they said that it wasn't just from bad.
Awesome. So they did have an actual pump?
They used to have one in there. We kept it fairly clear, but at the time it wasn't so full of two, three as it is now, so I'm not exactly sure. I'm not an expert. I'm just trying to look, I go by there and I'm competing and I saw it, again, the people living there and the ski that fire that they're living in. And there's something to do there to help and save the, that's, that's, that's why I believe that.
Trustee and then pretty.
Michael, uh, so this would probably be part of a capital project, correct? Correct? Um, and didn't we just vote on raising taxes to to make sure that we can, um, afford our capital projects going into the future? I just wanted to state.
And, and Dennis does have a chart, so, uh, all those items which we also, uh, faithfully saw, so we could start, I said, we'll, we'll talk about at the next staff meeting or whenever we're preparing the agenda for the next couple of meetings and.
I do have to say, I mean, what, this is necessarily capitalized because probably your, my spending authority, your spending authority, or the administrator's spending authority.
I said, okay, see, I don't know what I'm, I think it's a hundred thousand. I said, okay, see, I don't know what I got. I'm thinking it's a hundred thousand, I'm thinking it's a hundred thousand dollars.
No, no, I think, I'm thinking like a five hundred dollar spray.
One of those, one of those things that you said a kid where it's like, yeah.
A public nurse guy going out there and uh turning it on and off and pulling it in and.
That's more mine than that.
Brittany, did you have something you wanna say?
In regards to Oakland Dolls, I did distribute the engineering report that was conducted. A second, that was twenty-two, the building of, in the structure, so you're having a engineering box.
Uh, three, two, five, Abby Lane, uh, Pierce is right. This is a, a big problem. Um, and it's my neighbor's fault. It was designed poorly. I know Dennis has redone our neighborhood since I've lived there. We've been there, I don't know, five years now. And uh, it, it's bad. Again, I have cattails growing in my boat in the front yard. And so our neighbors are trying to contact you too. I don't know if you're aware of that. Uh, but there's people who wanna put pipes in there to try and fix this, but it's gonna continue to drain poorly. But I think if we're talking about like, what's the main purpose or what's the main problem, right? You gotta look at both neighbors.
Yeah, no, like it's gotta be engineer. It's gotta be, like I said, we gotta, we gotta fix that, but we also have to put a future like uh, it's a detention fund or something that's gonna stop it from. You know, it's just gonna happen again, yeah.
Working with Wisconsin, right?
Good luck. I've tried that. And let the water out the first time.
Yeah.
I can hold anybody. Yeah, all right.
All right. And the other thing I'll need to.
Thank you.
Um, my, you know, that I did just for the board to review and think about, in the mayor's pocket, the last meeting, you talked about this, these, these taxes. Uh, he had talked about uh imposing some sort of uh holding back on our increases of property taxes and encouraging others to do that. So I, I put together a sample resolution, um, talking about the property taxes, the impact of property taxes on people and how we, we could accept a tone and, and leave the way by other made at least during the term of this board to hold back on the amount, this, this date is five percent um under P tell their, their, their property tax extension. Uh, it's five percent for the rate of inflation or whichever is less. I would think for at least for three years, you could at least uh, even two and a half percent for elevated mutations. Uh, our, our request, the loose amount of money we're requesting uh to, to, if we're increasing the sales tax, maybe kind of hold back for property taxes basically a little bit. Well, that's something to do with. This is an example for the mayor to, to kind of lead the way.
Yeah, and I um, I appreciate that. We did have one meeting while the taxing bodies, we were meeting in August. Um, and to set the example, and then again, Lee Perry is also a founder of this. I may be wrong. It may have been right. I think Rockford or some other town did this and all the taxing bodies said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna cap it at three percent for the next three or four years. And that would be a great, but if we have to be the leaders in this, then I, yeah, I would support that as long as Michael doesn't say, oh, well. Here we go again. Um, so, well, yeah, but definitely, I, I definitely wanna keep this on our, our board's radar because I think we could be a good example if we can uh figure this out, especially with what we did tonight. And for me, um, that is why I would support what we did tonight, so we could reduce the problem in the long run. Um, all right, thank you. Good reports. Any other reports? I lost my agenda. Good. Who's next? Who's tonight's? Um. May develop. Howard, you?
So as the uh board of trustees are aware, are aware, are in the process of looking for new building inspectors, I'm spending more time with the permits coordinator. Doing all the zoning reviews for applications to our third parties viewer, which is HR for building review, plan review and also building accidents. Let's take good amount of time. I'm also becoming more involved in a lot of uh regular plants, especially at the summertime, like tissues. I would like to mention to the board that the, the August uh meeting for the planning and zoning board, I'm gonna be taking the application for the public works facility. So this is gonna be a massive application. It's gonna be broken up into three sections. The first one is a text amendment to allow specific uses within the estate zone. Second one would be especially used to review a public works facility with the site line review, site plan waivers. Probably for building landscaping. And then the third one is the variance for the channeling fence and for lock cut previous coverage. So that's gonna be a big application. I'm acting on behalf of the municipality. I'm also gonna do the uh mailings, the other notifications for that. So that's gonna be coming for the August meeting. You'll see it at Cal at the regular meeting. I'm also proposing a text amendment on behalf of uh Randy Nolan impression, the uh, the person here on Main Street. Uh, the text amendment to allow for his use within the downtown corridor. Uh, for some reason, he's classified as manufacturing. He's more of like a Kinko, where he does a little bit of everything. Nothing manufacturing related. So there needs to be a tweaking of the table of uses for the downtown form-based code that has all those uh downtown uses. So that might also present that on behalf of them to help allow for him to stay in the downtown area. Uh, other than that, you know, just a regular plan review, uh, regular inspections, stuff like that.
Is that Howard? Yes, hi, thank you. Um, just a little teaser, uh, Howard will be presenting next week with a group that's has a proposal for this building. So we'll see some concepts of uh what people are willing to do to this corner, so.
Right, the uh July twenty-third meeting. It's gonna be like a presentation to the board of what they're proposing to do with this area right here. So I think it's gonna be something nice to see, you know, response from your side.
Yeah, uh, thank you. All right. Thank you for the hard work of us. Uh, finance. Your job just got a little better.
Yes, it did. I did make note five hundred dollars camera projects. I got it down. The BSNA, uh, we're working on BSNA migration, the software. Um, so we're kind of in a slow period with them, which is great. Um, we just have one item that we need to knock out with them in the next five weeks, so we're working on that. Um, but they're gonna hit it hard uh as we get closer to the uh go live date. Um, biggest priority right now is the audit. Um, so with the being down to senior accountant. Um, it does make it a little more challenging. So we have a lot on our plate to try to get done. We have five weeks for uh that as well, that they come in on uh August the eighteenth through the twenty-second, I think it is. Um, so we have quite a bit to do and that's where all of our efforts will be at. Um, meantime, we're trying to sneak in some time, staff's trying to put in a little time to prepare for the move to Village Hall. So that's also on our radar, which is August fourteenth and fifteenth, so a couple of days prior to the auditor's coming back in. Um, so that's, has us a little busy. Um, so you see, as you go through the building, you know, there are a lot of boxes of paper. And so we've been working on, um, we have a high school student that's on helping us digitize uh the records. Um, so we have all the fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five accounts payable invoices. They've all been scanned. They're keeping both the paper and the electronic until we have moved from state to um shred the uh paper burden. Um, but we are trying to get ourselves towards digital so that we're not continually, continuing with the boxes and paper. Um, hmm, so the C C I agree, agreement. So we've been working off the C C on a, a proposal, I guess. So it wasn't actual, wasn't actually an engagement. Letter that we were working from and so it didn't spell things out well. And we're this, we just agreed to the engagement tonight. Um, so actually on there, it says that they prepared treasurer's report. I wasn't aware of this until I, until I saw the agreement. Um, so with the loss of the finance director and senior accountant, um, there's a loss of institutional knowledge. So nobody told me that they actually did this work and they, they're on our, when they work here, they work on the network and they actually just saved the report to a space that I'm supposed to know that it was in that space. So I wasn't aware. Um, so we'll start to see the uh Monday report. Um, so I'll get in there and start just drifting in because I wasn't aware that something I was doing. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, police.
Good evening. Just some of our staffing was collaborating for percent of our operating strength is still waiting for five new recruits to add the academy field training and that really is so. Um, we're in the final phases for hiring marketing records, but we have a few of our CSO. Uh, we'd like to congratulate also Brian Holmberg. He's at his twenty-year mark, the line. William Pike, girl, that is one year mark. Go to force an officer filled the year also is. As far as operations in June, we conducted over two hundred traffic stops. Uh, the focus on areas of no violations, laws and assist. And we handled for just over fifteen hundred incidents for the entire month. Investigated thirty-two traffic crashes. Of those twenty-four were property damage. It were injury accidents. And most were injury accidents for a lock once the tree border where the item, you know, speed impact was resolved. Uh, in June, we also completed our twenty-nine official course, fifty-six supplemental investigation course, the rest is still attending. Uh, for community engagement, we are uh participating again, also Charlie Schultz, Steve, the fight with this for Special Olympics. We're partnering with Double Good Popcorn. Uh, fifty percent of all the online sales will go towards Special Olympics Illinois. The fundraiser event runs from July tenth to fourteenth. For any details, like by some popcorn, please look down our social, yeah, Facebook page. Uh, for training and development, we just built our third, fourth quarter training plan, which keeps our vanity state credits up to par. Um, voter include firearms, defensive tactics, handcuffing, emergency vehicle operations, that. And Manda Garcia did just take our new drone last Friday. We're pretty excited about it. Uh, futures enhanced camera capabilities, increased battery life, which is also for client. And also just a reminder, this was acquired through Grant, so they fight one of us, so it's been possible. So we have.
Did you achieve any questions?
We have pictures of the fireworks.
Yeah, whose drone was that at the fireworks? Theirs or ours?
We had ours and then they had theirs, but I think there's citizens.
Okay. I saw again, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. All right, um, best reports, any uh executive session? There are no executive session. I guarantee a motion to adjourn. Motion trustee, second trustee Peterson, holy smokes, eight, ten, all favor? Any opposed? All right. Eight or eight, twelve, sorry, return to eight, twelve.